Okay, move on. We, I think everybody's trying to get ready for the fair. We'll have the fair be underway before we have our next meeting. Remind everybody the train's coming from Nashville. Be picking up twice and taking people home twice on this Saturday. So, go on the website and look and encourage your friends from Nashville or anywhere else to catch on the train, come and join us. Hope everyone has a great trip at the fair. Let's see, I think that's all for me. Thank you.
I like the, I don't worry. We have a deal about the meeting and we have a hard time making that tomorrow. I've got several. You see if the fair is coming up to, I think all of you know what it is. Busy, busy.
Well, and that's one thing to, I'd like to discuss. It's fine for maybe tomorrow morning or Thursday morning. Would that work better? But what it is, is that the issue for the square, we're having to address and have a second one so that we can get the funds down there for that if that passes.
About four thirty in the morning.
That's all I have right now. And do you have a time that you'd like to say?
Well, I mean, it's open here. I mean, it's Thursday morning at seven, seven thirty, something like that. It won't take long.
Seven thirty, what do you mean?
Seven thirty.
And they also have to add?
They are, oh, Thursday.
Thursday.
That'd be all right? Okay. All right. Well, we'll plan to have a special call Thursday morning at seven thirty.
Thank you, Mayor, I appreciate that.
No problem. It was just, kind of hit because election day is that. I was trying to keep off of that. That early in the morning, returns, stuff like that, won't be coming in until later that night.
I know, it's so great.
And we shall, well, commend anybody that runs for office. It's an experience I think everybody ought to go through once or twice in their life. Lanning with, I don't, okay. Brad?
Okay.
Rob?
Vote, get out and vote, Thursday, vote. Vote for the sales tax. Mayor and I behind that last time, we got shellacked. We'll see if the county can do any better. Though I don't know who's behind another county, but I know what's out there. Let's vote for, or else, I mean, we only have two sources of revenue, sales tax and property tax. And I think it's a much fairer tax for property tax because you're taxing everybody on what they spend, not on what they earn, and not on the value of their home. Please, get out and support them.
Go ahead. Chuck?
I want to recognize somebody that's here for the first time, not Richard Whitner. It's Xavier Smith, he works for the Lebanon Democrat now.
Yay!
And he's going to be our reporter person. I've known Xavier since probably Dixie youth baseball. He was a neighbor to one of my players back then, and we all got to know each other. He went to Lebanon High School, played football, outstanding athlete. And now he's using his writing talents for the Lebanon Democrat. I just wanted to welcome you. Welcome back to Lebanon.
Well, do you have anything?
That's all.
Ken?
Yes, sir, I just wanted to, just kind of express my concern. This really pertains to Ken and I as far as our different wards. And I know Jeff has been working diligently with the rail. And, you know, folks are going to help us with engineering. If we put the pipe under the railroad tracks, they'll help us engineer all that. And I think it's been pushed back just a little bit, but I want everybody to know that it's coming. It's just they've got some other responsibilities right now.
In October?
In October, we're looking at October. And I know the folks that are up on Cook Drive, and I know the Tex folks that are over there and get kind of covered up with water. It's going to be a really great move in a good direction. So, and I appreciate the landowners on either side of the track working with us because, you know, we all had to work together. So, I just wanted to say that. In addition, at this point, I would like to ask, we have a lot of paving that's going on, and, you know, the Higbee Ridge looks awesome, and we just got a lot of things that are looking really, really good. But I want to ask if we can suspend the rules to add it to the agenda tonight. And this would be the ordinance to authorize additional street paving for Indian Health Road. If any of you guys have been cutting through there, you see that we've done some water work, and it leaves a pretty bad mark in the streets, about two inches deep, would you say, Jeff? It's pretty significant. It is some bad, some bad holes there. But at this, if we have funding, it's going to cost about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, but it's in the budget for the paving that we all had. Some of us already know what's in there. So, we have the money, and I'd like for a second on that to suspend rules.
I'll say it.
Thank you.
A first and a second, suspend the rules. I think, all in favor? Opposed? Or suspended? And Kathy, do you have a number?
Yes, sir, fourteen forty-seven forty-four ordinance.
Fourteen forty-seven forty-four?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And this, this money's already in the budget?
Yes.
Okay, now, do you have a motion to add this to the agenda?
Yes.
Second?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I'll add it, and we'll do it at the end of the agenda.
That'll be fine, thank you, Mayor.
It'll be right now, so don't forget when we get down.
Excuse me, Mayor, will this also be added to the special call?
Simple.
Yeah, if we can. Anything else, Kathy?
No, sir, that's all, thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to ordinance fourteen forty-six fifty-three. Second reading to amend the major thoroughfare plan for the city of Lebanon. This is South Hartland Drive, Crowe Lane area. Part of the consent, yeah, we've got two here. Also...
Mayor, I'm pardon, my understanding is a council member from that area is supportive of this, because that's your sort of job?
Right.
Is that, okay.
And ordinance fourteen forty-six seventy-two. Second reading to amend Title VII, Chapter One, Section Seven, One oh Four, Lebanon Municipal Code. These are the two items on consent. Have a first to approve? Second? All right, and all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Consent items are passed. All right, now we go to new business. Ordinance fourteen forty-six seventy-one, for a screen to approve the services agreement and mutual non-disclosure agreement with Local Trust USA. I think Andy has been working on this since the day.
I got to send that off to, in case you don't know exactly what this is, Tim and his folks have been, that receives some training to basically do a fingerprint over the Jimmy Floyd Center. Whenever it's not for government agencies, but for employers or private companies that need to do background checks, they need fingerprints down on employees or applicants. They send them somewhere to get their fingerprints done. Tim and his folks are looking to just a little additional revenue from the city over there doing this for them. And they've sent us a contract that in its present form, I would jump up and down and scream it to the council approved it. So, I've made some changes to it and sent it back to the company today. And so, we don't have a finalized version for you to vote on. However, this is just first reading. If we want, if we want to put it on the next regular council agenda, I'm sure we'll have something worked out by then for second reading, or we can just postpone.
I have a quick question. And this is for governmental, this year, going through the electronic fingerprint. Like, when I got mine for Florida and Washington, it was electronic. Are we going to get involved in that piece of business when the government gets involved? Like, essentially, somebody wants to take a person out, they go to the police department. Are we going to completely take, take that over? And are we, as everybody transfers over to the digital, is our intent to send everybody to the Floyd Center as opposed to the police department?
We will thank whoever this company sends to us.
Okay.
So, the question is, really, it depends on who comes to the Floyd Center, right?
Right. They will see a location for this company to send people.
It would not negate from the police.
Right, because it's not about criminal history.
I'm moving you through.
First, second?
Discussion.
We're approving tentative...
On track, the chief changed.
Tendent to us being able to work something out.
We can't work something out that's agreeable, I thought, we won't have some...
Well, what I'm saying is, in this motion, we're approving, the one they sent us, we wanted to change and send back.
You're approving one contingent of us being able to get an agreement. You're not approving either one of them right now.
Okay.
You're approving the verdict.
That's a first reading.
That's a first reading. So, maybe we'll have to come back and find it. Worth the actual...
Finalizing.
Second.
It's just, it's pure liability and damages issues that aren't very accurate.
We're putting it in the minutes that it's based upon. You come to the great...
Right.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Of, ordinance fourteen forty-seven twenty-three. First reading to authorize budget amendments in the...
Motion to approve.
Second, Lisa. Have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass. Ordinance fourteen forty-seven twenty-seven. First reading to promote building and grounds for recreation. Have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass. Ordinance fourteen forty-seven twenty-eight. First reading to promote building and grounds for recreation. I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass. Ordinance fourteen forty-seven twenty-nine. First reading to promote field service intended for recreation. Opposed? I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance fourteen forty-seven thirty. First reading to authorize line of transfer from the police department. This is the thirteen fourteen budget telephone issue. Have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass. Ordinance fourteen forty-seven thirty-one. First reading to authorize budget amendment for the general fund. This is money that I'm setting up an account basically from where we receive money from the county on the wall down there sinking, sinking green.
Yeah, first and second.
I didn't hear it, I'm sorry. All right, first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Ordinance fourteen forty-seven thirty-two. First reading to authorize budget amendment, general fund, just for the wellness program. I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass. Resolution fourteen eighteen forty to establish city of Lebanon public records policy.
Second.
First and a second? Discussion?
I would ask that we pass this on first reading, but I would like for us to have a work session before we put it on for the second reading and not put it on. Because there's been someone, what's that? There you go, you're right. So, I would actually ask that we defer it, because there's, there's a couple parties involved that have some questions about it, and they just want an open forum where they can voice those questions. And I think that since we've gone this long without it, if we could get a, get a, just a work session set up next week and give those citizens perfect example, the Democrat, people that run the Democrat have some questions on how it's going to impact their ability to get police reports and things like that, and they're not comfortable. And I think that we should give them the opportunity to voice those questions. And I apologize for not paying attention, I was only wanting to read. So, I'd ask them to just defer it, set up a meeting with them next week where they can tell us how they feel about it, and we can make sure that Robert and Andy address those things, and then we can knock it out in the next round of council meeting.
On the floor, we have a first and a second.
I'll retract my second.
Wait, wait just a second. We're doing eighteen forty right now. So, Fred, do you pull, pull your...
Action.
Second is been pulled, yours on the one.
Like I said, we just have a week next week, and then we can knock it out in a single time in the next meeting.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Did the first?
No, no, I, it's still on the floor.
We got a second again, we're not...
You make the motions, the third?
No, you make the... You make the motion to pass, Brad, and Kathy pulled her motion. Now you pull it, okay. Do I have a motion to defer?
Motion to defer.
I have a first and a second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Defer. Resolution fourteen eighteen forty-one.
Same thing, I'll make a motion that we defer it, because they're essentially the same thing.
Yeah, this is regarding the criminal history.
I would say that.
I have a first and a second. All in favor on defer? Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Ordinance fourteen forty-seven thirty-three. First reading to...
Second.
Reallocate the funds for, all right, I have a first and a second. This is for our road project, Beckford Open Legends. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance fourteen forty-seven thirty-four. First reading to...
Second.
Equipment operator, and all, I have a first and a second discussion. Jeff, can you tell us what you think this would, I mean, we're still going to be on weekly, and basically, I mean, on monthly, this will not get us to a weekly. And the cost on this is about sixty-five thousand a year. By the way, you're projecting here, if it was full-time, it'd be about ninety-five thousand to set this additional vampire crew up.
It'd be ninety-two thousand because of the full year's budget this year. Like Mr. Burke's request is that, you, Jim, you ever want some, he's something, come tell us about, you know, the brush pickup, you guys know the downside, years back, you can hire the one, four-time cooking operator and get eight hours worth of two more, Jim, we'll run a different crew. I can't predict not, this will make we do a big, we pick up, like, ten years, the soccer will run quicker, you know. Lebanon's growing more about you, there's more, like, that, you, for what you's out there. What the issue still is, is the power side, like, what I remember very commonly, we get people that put out a whole lot of stuff out there. Whether you got to say no, she's going to back us up, or that, that's right, we're out, take them off, very simple. So, if we add another crew, get another crew, and my opinion, what we'll do is just by soccer building, if we want to, right now, zone one is the first Monday of the month, that particular week till we get it done. Zone two is the third Monday of the month till we get it done. Get another crew, you know, we make that cycle quicker. Well, not you want to try us to run it continuously, where the, some of these trucks, one we do, go to number two, we try it.
But now, can we use, can we also leverage this crew for some of the drainage remediation if we have some problems?
That's, they will not do that.
We can't, we can't...
They will not do that.
Move them over to hell.
The thought about giving the chip for a bit.
The, the thing of it is, we've gone through the monthly, and in reality, we haven't had, in reality, we haven't had really a lot of calls and complaints, a lot of calls and complaints of wood piles and all. Really been people that have too big of a pile, and we have that issue. We've been, the monthly has worked pretty well. Jeff, I know, you know, from the downsizing and the growth, he could use additional vampire, but the thing, the other thing I want to start this out is that we're doing this energy survey recycling, and with it, that recommendation later, we'd be coming, we might be going around with knucklebooms, and so the crews that we have will be able to, more to take care of, but that's a little ways on the thing.
I think just a poor talking about it personally, we only know some in first reading, but I feel like probably the guy, Lynn Parker, the group that they managed, that I think that if we add another crew, if we continue to do the once-a-month service for those two zones, what it would do is, if you didn't check that step, obviously, you're going to pick up one of that with time, so maybe get everything done in that first week. What's happened just last few months is, you take on the second week of that month to get, I've gone with it, Rob, also, what you said was, the first week, pick up zone one, have a second one, use those guys with other activities. Because of our growth, because of the amount of workers out there, five dozen take on into Monday Tuesday next week to finish up that rack. So, that's why you have the first week and the third week. The third week was zone two, so if you get to the five days, you roll over the next week to finish up. We get through the four days, that's correct, we get through sometimes six rackets, sometimes to ten days. Depends on if you have stones or whether, if somebody factors there. And this crew, if you stick with the, still stay with the two zones and once-a-month pickup, it'll improve the service, we'll get it done quicker. If you want to go back to once a week, that's be more different. But we'll try it, if not. But I'm saying, biggest thing to do right now, the other crew, stick on the same schedule, you get it done quicker. Obviously, those, those, you know, those guys could be used maybe the second week or the fourth, do something else. Now, like, Freddie talking more about, we'll try to do it once a week, that's a different question.
The map, I don't think it would work if that...
And I'm telling you, we can try, if that's what you want to do.
But this is a step in the right direction, though, right?
It will improve the service now, obviously, yes.
Plus, plus two, you know, it, this thing of, because I know in my board, there are a couple areas that they've had this stuff laying on the side of the road, but they've done turning brown, this truck rolled up to it, you know, you need to get help, get some crew to get it up, you know, so it won't, somebody throw a match up, somebody start a fire, it's running, that's the turning brown, you know, and they have to see it look good.
Well, I, you know, and I know we've worked with people, tried to put the word out to, you know, the zones, but a lot of people still have a hard time knowing what zone they're in.
Yeah, they don't know when it's going to go down, you know, and they're...
Our next, our next, it's, I said to be some long, the crew came through, and the next day, I saw someone put out a pile, and it's been there for a month now.
We're doing this for four years.
Yeah.
We go almost five, that's almost five. Again, because we move on in our technology, we're going to talk about change of activity, and Rob was working on, we'll do a letter type, then we'll tell it about people more. And yours, the kids will say, so that'll get, that'll improve, but Mayor's right, you've got to send it, we'll go right by, run that route this week, cook red letters, but put a new pile out, we use a month or one, and we can't start running back home.
The only thing that this, what this will accomplish for you is that you'll probably get through your zone, that one zone, probably within the week. And then, if anything else has been out there, then instead of us moving those men to doing something else like we're doing, you know, you might end up having one roaming crew that last week's still going around picking up if there's anything additional to do.
Take the same drill, we got to put the first week's zone one, and run right back to zone one, second week, you win.
But then you're going to ask the question I want to ask, so what are you going to do with the extra vampire?
Well, then I could say...
You get through, what is, what are you going to do with the extra vampire?
You think we better be helping working the rest of it, as you know, street department is jacked up all the trains in our city, so I'm not worried about utilization of that vampire. We'll make them, there's plenty of work at their photos, most of the question is, I need everybody to understand that how this program's going to affect the cheaper service, it's going to, we're just going to stand on once-a-month service, you'll make it more efficient, but it's not once a week. And that period, what we're trying to, does that make sense to everybody, as long as you understand what I'm saying?
All right, so anyone have any other questions?
But it's kind of like what Kathy was saying, it's a step toward the direction you can back.
You have another crew down the road, you probably did with the service.
But every crew, every man crew is kind of full-time, going to cost you about a hundred grand.
That's one, that's only one full-time, then there is part-time. If you want three full times, possible cost.
But the one time, when the slower time, we can absorb that guy. So, just, we've touched pros and cons, except you have, any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First reading to authorize the land lease agreement with Presler Air, not eight. All right, I have a first, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass. Ordinance fourteen forty-seven thirty-six. First reading to authorize line of transfer for the personnel department. I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass. Ordinance fourteen forty-seven thirty-seven. First reading to authorize purchase of replacement equipment.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have a first, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass. Ordinance fourteen forty-seven thirty-eight. First reading to authorize the purchase of the used mower, Recreation Department, and the more detail on it, we opened it today, it's in front of you, right here.
Second.
I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass. Ordinance fourteen forty-seven thirty-nine. First reading to authorize the budget amendment for the general fund to set up the expense account payments of the Wilson County Board of Education. This is where we're having to pay the back liquor tax. And there's, pass. I have a first, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Pass. Resolution fourteen eighteen forty-two. First, first set of date for the referendum for the city's sales tax. I have a first and a second.
Discussion.
And, okay, these dates will be September, talk to the planning, I mean, to the election commission, and they prefer that these dates be September third through eighteenth for the early voting, and twenty-third on the final.
Why are we doing it on the city election in November?
They, well, I, you know, they, to me, the reason I'm bringing this forward, because personally, I believe that if we have this one thing, one issue up front, and that's the only issue, that we'll have the better opportunity in which to pass this. It'll be the same thing, if you go in November, it'll be on the ballot, be at the very tally. And I asked them, can you put it on the front, since we've been waiting so long? And they said no. So, it'll be on the very last again. And with that, you're having all the other elections that are going on, and you're having, you know, the governor election and all the others, and it, just like the last time, I'm afraid it would get lost in, in the talk of the campaign right there. To me, the opportunity here is that, like, I've told people today, I voted for it for the county, but if it passed, they need to know ahead of time here, and that's the only reason it's on now before the Thursday vote, is because they needed to know, so they could set up everything, get things started for, you know, in a timely fashion, training and get everything done. The bottom line issue here is that if it doesn't pass, if it passes for the county, this is null and void. If it doesn't pass, well, then we'll have about four weeks or so, not even that much, about three and a half weeks to really get out and push and, and talk about it, try to get it passed. And if it should pass, then the city, they will, will be able to hang up that hat stand, the city would be getting the full amount, which is estimated about four point two million.
Well, I don't, I don't understand why they don't just put it on the November ballot, you know, spend thirty-five thousand dollars for one thing, it's not just about spending the millions.
It's projected about twenty-five, projected about twenty-five for the return. It's projected about twenty-five, projected about twenty-five for the return. And the, and the other thing is, I personally feel the better opportunity for it to pass is that this special election being there and in September, and with that, you know, I expect and I feel like that the commitment here is that when, the next time that we're adjusting the setting for our property taxes, that we'd be looking at an eighteen to twenty cent reduction.
Well, the only thing that I like to chime in is, you know, I was the big person on the council, as a council member that supported the last one, the God shall act. And I was a guy that was supporting it, but when you read the ballot, when you get through everything, I knew what I was voting for, but I didn't understand the language. And if I wasn't one of the people that was pushing it, I couldn't have voted for it because I knew that that was my item, but I really didn't understand what it said from the governmental language. So I told the mayor, I'd support him one more time to try to get it, so when the people left and they go to the polls, that you know that that's exactly what they're voting for. A yes vote is this, a no vote is this, we get the post, we get the Democrat, we get everybody to clearly outline it, and everybody's going for one item, and I think that's going to give us the best opportunity to say, if we get our teeth kicked in two to one again one more time, then I'm going to go quietly into the night and never bring it up again.
Same here.
Like, because the definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over and expecting different results, but I think if we just put that one item on there, and I don't disagree with Fred on the expenditure, but I think that could be money well spent, because I just, I just think sales taxes are fair. I just don't think a property taxes.
Well, see, another thing too, Rob, you got to realize too, landing myself and part of your own, you know, we're not people, I have fixed incomes, I have senior people over there, you know, you'd be surprised, the problem they go through trying to make ends with, you know, and you're talking about reducing property taxes, that's our base, Mr. Spring will tell you that, we, you pass that property tax, you don't need to be messing with the base money. That's what the people paying for it, to take care of the services of the city, and you're going to mess around and reduce that.
Yeah, but credit is it not wise to think of, you've got two piles of money that are here, your sales tax and your property tax. Why, if you have the opportunity to do this, and that, that's majority of those dollars are coming from people going up down the interstate, and the people that don't even live in here, in our city, and if they pay the sales tax, they're helping us carry the load, and this way we can reduce the property tax on our citizens, so to me, we're giving the citizens an opportunity to reduce their burden. And, and, and the thing of it is, if you're able to reduce the property taxes, all, all the people that you're talking about, if they are renting in, in a home and you get a property tax reduction, then it's very unlikely that the increase of rents will be going up on them. So they, they, they are able to benefit from this also, and plus all the extra dollars that come in, over and above, you know, when we talk about twenty cent reduction, we're talking about one point six million dollars. The half cent will generate us four point two, and the majority of that money is from people that don't even live in our city, but they come here every day and use our facilities and we have to take care of them. So to me, to me, the, the best option here is to. Go forward, Mr. Kim.
I, I just, I want to say that number one, I am for people deciding, you know, if they want the tax or not, I mean, that, I think that's the way to go. But to have it as standalone, technically twenty-five people that go to vote could maybe give us this increase, and that's not really representative of the population, so I'd like to offer them and to put it on the November ballot.
We already, we already have a first and a second.
I'm asking.
Call for the vote.
No, I'm asking to amend that, for the folks that have the first and the second. It is, it is, I know it is.
All right, just a couple of things, I mean, the half a cent that we're going for, just remember, if you spend fifteen thousand dollars in City Eleven, I don't know, I'm just getting a couple of numbers out there, Cap, I understand, that's, but also, this is also needs to be a two-part thing, if we do get it on the ballot as a standalone, then we as a council have to determine what we want to do for our property tax vote, and I think we shouldn't throw out any numbers until the body works together and comes out with what we think is fair, because I know I've heard a lot of numbers thrown out there, and people say, hey, you're going to roll my property tax by fifty percent. I'm not that guy, but, but as far as, I made a motion and I'm, I'm, I'm supportive of the standalone.
I, I, all I want to do.
All right, I have a, I have a first and a second, but I have a motion to.
Okay, so we're not spending forty grand, that's fine. You're going to lose the vote because you won't move it to November, that's all I'm saying. You know, that's just, that just misses the whole point. We could get what you want, but just by moving it to a standalone?
Yeah, but I'm pretty sure I did that last time and I got shall act.
Yeah.
Because I moved it, I moved it the last time, and I got the link.
Okay, well, you know, if that's all that's on the plank, then we just have to vote what's on the plank.
Lady? And first and second? Call here, call.
Lenny Jewell?
No.
Pardon?
No.
Brad Burton?
No.
Rob Sestramino?
Yes.
Joe Hayes?
Yes.
Tick Bryan?
Yes.
Kathy Warman?
No, only because it's not November.
Mayor Wachter?
Yes.
Pass.
I'm siding with Mayor, I understand what you're doing, I just, I prefer November, that's not against the, put it out there for the people.
No.
And if, and if I felt it would, could pass and not get lost in all the rhetoric in November, I'd be there too, but it would get lost, and so that's why I'm so strongly in favor of doing it in September, and I'll be out there door knocking and telling everybody exactly what it is, and I hope y'all will join me.
And just remember, I was the guy last time, the mayor tried to get me off to November, and I caught him tooth and nail, and wanted to let him come off. Didn't work out like I thought.
All right, ordinance fourteen forty seven forty, first reading to appropriate funds for approved purchase of five point two square. This, and first and second? Discuss, you want to ask, thank you.
I would, I would like to see us defer this right now. Uh, and the reason being, because of the other expenses that we're getting hit with right now. And then I would like to carry it further in the fact that, oh. I know that it, I think it's in the market value, I'd like to see something that's what is going to cost us to bring this around.
Well.
I mean, it now, I'll agree with you, where it's at, it would be ideal for us to, to go in.
First of all, do I have a second?
No.
No, okay, all right. We'll discuss it now, the, the, the issue, you.
I'll second, so.
All right, we have a second, now we have a discussion, all right? The thing of it is, there's other parties interested in this, I, you know, I wouldn't mind deferring it, but I felt like if we had opportunity to, to get it, but if we've, you know, I've talked to them, I've tried to get it down, it started quite a bit higher, I've got it down to here, but it's hard to try to get anything down to above it in price when someone else is interested in it and ready to close. If we are basically, from what I'm understanding and been told, they want to know if we're going to do it or not. If not, we won't have it, and we will probably never be able to get this property again. It only, you know, sometimes when things happen and they become available, we've got to jump on it, even though we do not have a plank, but we can make a plan, and we can go after grants to help food state and other things to try to make that plan come true. But whenever this property here, to be able to connect it there to the senior citizens and to the Jimmy Floyd, it's an investment here for us and, and the city, and the worst of the worst, which time we didn't want to do anything or want to do it, we could always sell it, but if you're going to be able to get it, you know, you better buy it when it's there, because next day it won't be, and you'll be regretting it for a long time.
Is that in the budget, Mayor?
No, this is not, and it'll be coming out of.
The randy.
The general fund, of which we talked about one time things, the millions that we had, that we would like to step up and do. Uh, this building is about thirteen thousand square foot.
What's in the ideal location?
Solidum, ideal location.
Mr. Spring? On our randy deck line, started out a year or two ago with the Van Deen, and where are we at?
Probably about the same.
So this is not coming out of that?
It would come out of that.
Look, we're, we're gaining, our sales tax are up, and there are other things, we spent extra dollars, we're, we're, we're doing good, and this is the time, I, I strongly feel this time, that if we're going to do some improvements in planning for the future, this is part of the plan right there.
So, I don't know, I looked at that building today, and it's got so much debris in it, you can't even tell about the building, and I was probably.
There's a recycling operation in there, you know, there's, there's a, there's business out there renting, so basically, we could rent it to him for a while until we decide, and then that's better than on that than the half a percent that we able to give for our money or less, which be coming out.
How much rent is he payable?
I do not know, I can find out, but I'd say it's probably at least a thousand or more, easily, I mean, the bill's thirteen thousand square foot.
Whereas to me, it's way over the appraisal range, you know, that's, I just, like I said.
The property tax and all, I think what is it, it was about two fifty or so, but a lot of properties, as you know, and the reevaluations on some, I don't, I believe this was higher at one time, it's come down, but the location, a lot of it, you got somebody else that's looking to really to go on and buy it and snap it up, it's going to be gone.
And where would you go and check, I mean?
I mean, I walked through, I walked through, it's about, the ceilings are about sixteen foot, and you've got the concrete trusses, you have a water issue when it comes on the front, it's also over the year, so much extra rock that's been built up, and then it collects water between the building and the rock, that's a little drainage thing, that's not a big issue, you might have a little issue on the roof or in a place or two, because, and I went and talked to them after it come to rain, and, but that's where it been is, and also it's, you know, minor, it's a block building, so you can do most anything.
So we don't want anything like asbestos?
No.
Mold?
No, I mean, the, the framing of it's just a panel, wood panel, studs walls on that front part, you know, the one with the barackment above it, yeah, and the rest of it's all block and all concrete. The, the other thing, if you're wondering what you can use for, we need a place, don't we, for the backs in the winter, it'd be a perfect place, drive them in, you know, until we got the other buildings built, so there's uses for. I'm telling you, you need to, you need to buy it when you can, if not, it's going to be gone, and we won't have it. Okay, roll call.
Lenny Jewell?
I asked.
Brad Burton?
No.
Rob Sestramino?
Yes.
Joe Hayes?
Yes.
Tick Bryan?
Yes.
Kathy Warman? Kathy Warman?
No.
Can I say, Joe, would you like to go?
fourteen forty seven forty one, first reading to authorize the US two thirty-one North Corridor revitalization pilot program. Before you, right here, in front of you, is, and this time I've talked to Lenny and Fred, this is an area that we're looking at from the Democratic Party up to the old polling alley, since Hartman Drive has been done, this area traffic has reduced, and with that, we have become a lot of empty buildings, this is an area where a lot of people are out of work and looking for work, and with this pilot, it's a three-year pilot that the council could later adjust later, but we're looking at the properties that are facing two thirty-one, and basically is that if we can get someone to come in, build a new building and create jobs, that's what we're after. We're encouraging it through like a seventy-five percent reduction in the general fund fees, like building permits, stormwater and stuff like that, our tax and all, they're still paying for them and all. Then if the property tax were, could be abated for like three years, if they have five to ten people employed, from ten to fifteen, you know, four years, and then for the city of Lebanon, just property taxes. The thing of it is, this area is, it's not coming up, and, and this might give that opportunity, might not work, but at least we try to find somebody to invest in this area.
I'll second, I think we're discussing that doing very high. Uh, I know that we talked about it, I appreciate you for thinking about this, but now I got to thinking about it a little bit further, and I know we're talking about, you know, trying to call in the pilot program, see if we could help out certain areas, and I got to thinking this is for, it would be mostly here, for people buying a piece of property, building and doing, and I was thinking, well, we've got people there with buildings that are trying to rent, but then also carry it a step further, and if I was the person looking to rent that building, then there's no tax incentive there for me to bring in employees, and I don't know how to facilitate, I mean, but you see what I'm saying?
Uh, I realize, I see what you're saying, but the thing of it is, is that if they're renting it, you wouldn't be, you know, they're paying the rent, so the land, on whoever owns the property, but there's a lot of vacant land, there's a lot of buildings that need to be torn down and rebuilt, and I'm hoping that this will also kind of get them gone. There's one section right in there that we're, I'm hoping that this will encourage a group to come in and do, and if it does, it's twelve to fifteen jobs, but this area, I don't remember anything new being built in that area for over twenty-five years.
But a few things remodeled.
Yeah, new, new built, you know, and with the traffic flows changing, this area doesn't have the count, number counts that it used to, and I feel like it's an opportunity, like I think you.
Well, you said to Joe, that's the reason.
The, the thing of it is, what I'm looking at is that, y'all, everyone look at this, and if you have any more suggestions or, you know, to do it, we can always amend it and do it, I didn't leave it so tight, it's loose, that where this council could extend it or do what they wanted to, so.
Well, I was just thinking along the lines, if somebody could come in one of those buildings and try to establish another business, and it could be several jobs.
Well, when, when you're done on rent, and renting a building, and the other job, if there's a trend job, you got to remember that on the HUD maps, this is an area that shows where you could get incentives, you know, because of the area that HUD designates, so for at least in part of this area. So I, I'm hoping that we can pass it, and then we can ask other people and any other suggestions, and always come back and look at it to make it even better.
Well, that's why we wanted to bring that up, because some of the council may have ideas as to how to, how for incentives, if it works, we can roll out and do it.
And I, I welcome them, and hopefully, you know, we, we can find some situations, or they might come up out of nowhere and we say, hey, if we do this, we can make this happen, and also, we'll bring it back. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Ordinants fourteen forty seven forty two, first reading to allocate additional funds for Lebanon Square Project, and first?
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Pass. Ordinance fourteen forty seven forty three, first reading to make City Lebanon Personnel Rules and Regulations and Control and Documents, or Lebanon Police Department General Order Manual on a interim basis.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. If I could ask Leanne to come up here, please, in case y'all have any questions. We took the Lebanon Rules and Regulations about discipline, and that's all this is about, is about discipline, and then we took the ones for the police department, and they don't, they don't correspond at all. So the idea was, until we get our HR professional hired, to take them and meld them together so that we can actually manage whatever it is, and, you know, and that's not a CLIA. I don't know why it's in that policy, but it's okay, but it's not a CLIA recommendation, it's not CLIA mandated. So at this point, I just want to offer this, and if you've got questions for Leanne, I mean, she's definitely here, but I'd make a motion that we do this on an interim basis until we get a new personnel specialist to help us meld these things together and make them all uniform.
Second. All right, discussion. Any questions to assist to our effect?
Couple of things, one.
Where we stand on it?
They do have to have a discipline policy as part of the CLIA accreditation process, and they have to have a policy in their hand book in order to be, continue their accreditation with CLIA. And what that policy says, obviously, could be tough for debate, but to say they don't match at all with what's in the general rule and regs, they do match. In fact, Commissioner Reese was here, he and I sat down and made sure that the police department's policy matched exactly what the personnel rules and regs did. That the timeframe may be a little different, but the four-step process for appealing a disciplinary issue is exact same. So if this is a liability issue, I've got that under control. If you just want everything to match for data, then we can handle that too. The other issue is, the way the ordinance is written, it suspends the whole general order manual, and so I'd like at least permission to revise it, Captain, for the next reading, to just cover discipline and grievance issues, because we can't, we can't suspend the general order manual, because they have no policies at that point.
Well.
And that's the number one issue, a police property suit of our policy issue.
And that's really kind of where, this is how this came about. So I would pass it on first reading, and if you want to come back and tweak the language, I'm perfectly fine with that. My only thing is that it's in just that one portion, and I hope that it'd be laying up here so you can look at the two of them, I asked for that, but evidently, we didn't get around to getting it up here, just to make them uniform, that's all. And then if it needs to be something different, then you can tweak it and tell us what you think and why you think it, and that's fine. So I'd like to motion that we pass this on an interim basis, and that's what this is, until we get our HR specialist, and then we can kind of hammer it out and work on things. But right now, there's been enough concern with the one that doesn't match the other, and yes, they may need to have something, but they will have something, they'll come underneath the Lebanon Personnel Rules and Regulations, Leanne?
Tell us, the Lebanon, I don't see the Lebanon Rules and Regulations are going to supersede in common law. If you go to a court of law named Ma, they will supersede, they'll go right back to that Lebanon Personnel Rules and Regulations.
And see, right now, that book doesn't quite, it's not quite the same as the personnel book, so it's just a, just a step, and let's get it cleaned up, and let's just put it over there so that our HR specialist can work on it, and I'd make that motion, please.
Like I said, I still second with understanding that I won't, I won't vote for on second reading until Andy's had the chance to revise it, and he gives us the legal, we're okay with it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Draw them in here, ordinance fourteen, forty-seven, forty-four. This is what Kathy was referred to earlier in the comments, this is to authorize additional street paving for Indian Hills, approximately about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. From what I understand, we already have a first and a second here.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, so from what I understand on this, is that, Jeff, we, it is part of what, has, we've done repairs and sewers and stuff, different things, has it had enough time to settle so that we won't have an issue after we pay? I mean, what is that?
I'm going to hear you tell you that.
Oh, but what, I mean, how long has it been?
Fifteen minutes now, fifteen minutes.
Been seven months?
Yeah.
Okay, are we having any settling? Because I don't private, I haven't driven that brother in a while, Mr. Jeff.
It's quiet, pretty close.
Well, all right, now, I know that, Jeff, you said that this would be one of the, for the spring.
We have another, you know, this council brought another million dollars this past year, they'll probably be next spring paid. So, yeah, this, you prove it like, this one thirty or so, whatever, it will come out at a billion, of course, if we do it now, or in April, wouldn't matter. Other common there would be, it's not a big problem, we also don't, we actually be going to do it now, we can try to wait, you know, another month or six weeks, pay it too, to get a little more time to settle, and watch, towards that number. Try to get paid this fall, or next.
Can we catch it on those of the prices that we are saving some dollars?
We grew it tonight, it'll be on those prices.
Okay, so it will be, by doing this, instead of having it in spring on that time, we're doing that, we'll save a few dollars, but also it won't have.
Yeah, and can I say this, Mayor, there is no patching at all, it is a total cut about that deep, and it's got, you know, where they actually are ready to do something. It goes over Indian Hills, a gigantic teeth, and then it also crosses over to the next road, but there's no patching to settle, there's nothing in the hole.
Okay.
It's a gigantic.
That's one of the mistakes, it's been patched or stretched out, but it's been redone, so it has been patched.
It's already done and then been redone, so it should be in pretty good shape. That's what I was trying to say. Yeah, Randy?
Just one thing in conjunction with all this, and it's what we do with any of our street pavings, Captain, just, we want to ensure that we've done all utility repairs along Indian Hills before we pay, so if there are any sewer gas.
Here's our tip on that.
Okay, we've already known, I was just about to add.
Okay, thank you.
But are they on the list to get paid eventually? They got to, they got to, they got to pay over that, don't they? Don't they have to pay over the patching or mill it or whatever?
They're already milled, and sitting there milling.
Anytime there's sewer problem, if you pay it before, like, you're paying the contractor, the sewer contractor, they're sitting here counting it, they always just pass it, pass it through, you always get a better, better price on how you pay by your contract, break through, over contract.
I don't, I don't envision that, there are extreme amount of cuts, not potholes, but, you know, a little paving patch here, a little paving patch there, but if you go down there and just play this game, and you try to dodge all those, you're doing this all the way down the road.
Like Liz May.
But, you know, I think we've got that.
That's all the utility.
No, just the holes.
I don't know what those are.
Not the holes.
Kathy, you said something, or something I'm going to regret.
I haven't been there.
There's no patch on any of it, it's been milled, but it's.
But it has been patched, right?
No. Well, if they're gone, the patches are gone there.
What's there, where you go look, is it patch cut with the rust cut?
Everybody go look, see exactly what I'm telling you.
All right, I'll.
I understand, right, that that money is in the budget.
It's in the budget for the spring, and by doing it now, we'll be able to, you know, it'll reduce that amount for later, but this is on one of the streets that's on it, I think the main thing is that it's time for us and ready for us, and apparently everything that I've heard, but I didn't know of this until, yeah, a little bit, that it's, it won't be an issue for those things that we really look for.
No.
Am I right there?
Yes.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thursday morning at seven-thirty.